Okay, everybody, please pull your microphones up. We have a, so that everybody can hear us and whatever this little recording device here is can hear us. This is a public hearing. For Lakeside Constructions, they want to dismantle an old cottage and build a new one. And if you could, introduce yourself and show us what you have, please.
I'm Joe Williams with Lakeside Construction.
Will you hear? You were the one who presented the original app.
Yes, ma'am.
I thought so, yes.
Yes, ma'am. A couple of weeks back. So, yeah, as you've stated, the project at June Street, you'll forgive me, we did one on July, so I keep wanting to say July Street, but at 19th June Street for the Lovett family, which we had a site walk for last week.
Yes.
Yes, correct.
So, can you explain what it is they want to do, please?
Yes, ma'am.
You know, I will tell you right now, we don't have a plot plan.
Yes, you do, ma'am. We went over it last week. We had it up here on the table.
Where is it?
I have, you know what, though? I have two more right here, if you'd like.
We need that, yeah.
I gave you a full-size last week.
Yeah, I remember seeing one, but there was just...
The same as this, all right? The same as the small one. You just have a bigger page.
Yeah, we have a small one.
Yes.
No, I don't have a small one either. You know...
There should be one in every patch.
Well, there isn't.
So, what this is, is this is your existing, and then this is your proposed.
Yeah, but the problem is, this is in shoreline, right?
Correct.
I haven't a clue where the pond is on this. I haven't a clue how many feet back you are from the pond.
Forty-three feet from the high-water mark.
All right. It's on here, okay.
And it will be 51 feet back, so we're moving the proposed structure back to be more conforming. So, it's currently at 43 feet, and it will go back to 51. And our setback to restrict us from coming farther back is our proximity to the septic system that was newly put in.
Yeah, you might want to go back.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. We need to help the audience here, so I'm sorry about that.
No, I apologize.
Yeah, that's not a problem.
So, the limiting factor that won't allow us to go back to any greater extent is that there was a septic system put in for this in 2012, I believe. The paperwork is in the folder. And that septic system, in order to keep our setbacks from that, will not allow us to take the structure back more than the 51 feet from the high-water mark.
I will open it up to any questions. Pardon? Give me. Well, I don't know you're here. I saw...whatever.
Thank you. I'm Bonnie Lord Loughlin. I live on Cape Road. I saw the ad.
Is that on?
Was it on for Mr. Williams?
It's down now.
Okay.
As long as it's up, your mouth will hold it, it's good.
I saw the notice in the shopping guide about a public hearing tonight, and when I read it, it had to do with the shoreline zone. I am not here with any special issue, nor am I a butter to this project, but I am interested, like I believe all of you are, in the shoreline zone, so I wanted to learn a little bit more about this project and whether it was going to be asking for some kind of a condition about the shoreline zone. So, I was hoping you could educate us about that as a public hearing. And also, Joyce, when you just read what you read a minute ago about, description about it, as I remember in the shopping guide, it talked about removing a structure, which was on the property, and replacing it with a cottage. So, part of the rest of my curiosity had to do with what a cottage is and what structure that might have been. If it didn't say structure, but we can all look it up.
It is a house. They are, evidently, the house, if you'd like to explain so.
Those are pretty much my questions. And again, I was hoping to get more education about what impact this would possibly be to the shoreline zone. Thank you.
Okay. If you could explain to her why you're doing this?
Yeah, I can. Any part of that, I'd be happy to answer. So, the project is actually due to an insurance. There was a tree damage in one of the major storms that came through back last December, I believe, and a tree went through the roof. So, in part, when the tree did the damage to, instead of just repairing the roof at that point, the decision was made to build a new project. With that, many times, by taking down an older project and putting in a new project, you can become more conforming and do better stabilization to minimize some of the washing and whatnot that goes into the lake from some of these old properties that weren't set up well. So, this property in particular isn't expanding any footprint at all. It's actually staying within its existing footprint.
That's my question.
And it's being moved further back from the water and actually a little more centralized on the lot itself. So, it will benefit any of the shoreline at that point, more so than what's currently there.
So, the existing shed, you're just tearing it down because it's in the way?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, okay. But it's not going to be part of the new structure?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
Uh, question, Joyce, and I think I'm...
Sure. Yep.
Don't go away, it's so big. Thanks. Are there issues to do with the septic? I think I heard Joyce mention that a moment ago. I'll just let you explain. Are there, is there a new, was there a septic there before?
Yes.
That's going to be replaced?
No, the septic's not going to be replaced, correct?
Oh, okay.
It's relatively new.
It's relatively new.
Quite new.
It was 2012. So, the same septic will stay there? Structure will, a new structure will be built farther back?
In the same footprint that the exist, well, it will be set back from, as he said, further from the shore, yes.
And part of what you all are going to explore is whether the septic is, even though it's only 12 years old, whether it's adequate.
That's Craig. Craig has to be the one to ensure that the septic system meets the proper standard. Okay? Does anyone from the board have any questions?
I do.
Go ahead, Pete.
Yeah, just my own piece of mind. How many trees are you going to remove?
In order to put in the structure and dig the foundation, trees that we would actually damage the root system, which would make them then an issue for the home, because if we dig along the root system, we damage one side, there are two, possibly three, trees that would be impacted by that.
Okay. But there's three trees removed. I don't see anywhere on the print where you're going to relocate those three trees.
Typically, we work with a code officer, because many times, clients would like to have additional trees removed, and we set up a meeting and discuss that before we go any, you know, to see if we're going to remove trees, what are we able to remove, and then do a replanting.
When you replant, is this going to be a seedling or a three- or four-year-old tree?
Many times, it requires a tree of a native nature, of a certain size. It's often detailed.
Yeah, I think it's two and a half inches at four and a half feet up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That was all I had. Pretty good-sized tree.
Any questions? Can I ask another question?
Sure.
Thank you. Mr. Williams, I think a lot of us have either experienced in our own time or certainly read articles about the erosion vulnerability that removing trees can bring to a shoreline area. So, it's one thing to cut the trees for the prop, for the building of the new structure, but it's another thing. I was just kind of following what Pete was saying, and I know that when we remove trees and all their roots, which do a lot to hold the soil in place to prevent erosion, just wondered if you'd thought of that, too. I haven't seen any pictures, so I, these are all innocent questions. I'm curious about our shoreline. And I don't even, you all referring to the pond, is it Horn Pond? Okay, thanks.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
Is the public allowed to go on sidewalks? I never really thought much about it.
Yes, they do. They, we've had a...
I would just suggest that if this interests you next time to go on the sidewalk, it would tell you a lot more than...
It'd have to be advertised.
Yeah, it is true that other towns, I've seen Limerick advertise their sidewalks, and that is something we have never done.
Oh, you've never advertised?
We've never advertised a sidewalk, but maybe we should.
Maybe we should.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, okay. That might mean a slight increase in our budget. We need to talk about that.
I don't think so. Is he correct on the public?
No, no, I'm talking about, oh, it would be in the same...
I could probably put it in the same...
No, this would, this...
Same ad as the public hearing.
Well, no, no, no.
Sometimes they're too tight to do.
Yeah. In other towns, they do it as a separate ad, because the, of when the sidewalk takes place, we're never sure exactly when our sidewalks are going to take place, and it could be during a time either before the required advertising for the public hearing. So, if we're going to do it, I think we should do it in a, in a separate ad. And we don't do that many sidewalks. Maybe if we planned on six, let's say, for the year, and we should total that up and see what the ads for the sidewalk would be, how much, and...
Another thing that we probably have to consider when that happens is the timing is not right to put it a week ahead, and ask being Monday by noon time to get the ad in, and we made the decision Monday night, like right here.
Well, no, no. This is...
It may be a little tricky. No, you don't think?
I don't think so. No, I really don't, no. When the applicant comes in is when we set up the sidewalk date. So, we've got plenty of time to add, you know. We'll see what, when the date is, and, and we'll just have to work around it. I mean, other towns do it. It can't be that hard to do. Yes, Pete?
The sidewalk we did last week, if we invited the public, that move wasn't very big. Where would they park?
Well, that's that one instance. Yeah, see, I wasn't around to be able to go on the sidewalk last week, so, but I did, I do know that Darryl said that parking was a serious issue down there. But that's not the case in every sidewalk that we do. I mean, that was that particular circumstance, and people just have to work around it. Nine chances out of 10, if you get, you know, three or four people, why, you're getting a lot. I mean, that's been the experience in the past, anyway.
Three to four people can extend the sidewalk an hour, maybe longer.
Well, yeah.
Because we're dealing with all those extra questions. Anything else?
I think there's, I think there's a, I can't, I have to go back and review it, but they are welcome to come. How, certainly, if they're going to come, they might have some questions, but they can't participate at the same level that the planning board does, as I recall. I'll have to look into that. But, yeah, if people are going to come, they're legitimately probably going to have questions to ask, but it's not going to be like a public hearing kind of thing. They have to be pretty short and sweet, if I can phrase it that way.
And the answers they get, it's not something they can take to the bank simply because we haven't had a chance to research it.
Right, exactly, exactly, exactly. They will be questions that we, that we would potentially address, like tonight at a public hearing, when we make our decision. We would, you know, make sure those concerns were properly addressed. That would be the time to really give the full answer. I mean, I envision sort of if the public comes to a sidewalk and they, whatever the question might be, the owner or their representative would give a brief answer. The planning board would not get involved in the discussion at that time, but we would take note of what the question was. And at this type of meeting, before we make a decision, we would take into consideration any questions that were asked and made sure that they were answered to our satisfaction and, you know, hopefully to the, the public person's satisfaction. I don't think it's going to be a major problem. I really don't. We've had a couple of people come on sidewalks before.
We did one that was a museum, if you've passed here.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Sandpits, that's it.
Yeah, and the sand pits. Yeah, sand pits, we've had several people, yeah. Does anyone else on the, on the board have any questions?
Let me ask them, please.
The issue will address, there are erosion control standards in the ordinance, and I think the bottom line here is that whatever the standard is in the ordinance, they have to follow. And, and they cannot proceed until they've gotten the approval. They will get no permits. There's, that's one of the new citations that was voted in at the last update to the ordinance, is that there are no permits ever given until all the conditions within the notice of decision and the ordinance have been met. And that's up to the code enforcement officer. We don't go out and measure and enforce. He's a code enforcement officer, so that's, that's his bailiwick, if you will. But I don't think that, I don't see us citing every single square inch or every, you know, every setback requirement. To me, and, and please disagree with me, board members, if you, if you do, I think that if there were exceptions, we'd have to address those, but to make a statement that, that I just said, that no permits are granted until, you know, Craig makes sure the setbacks are what's required, that the, you know, that, that the septic system is adequate, you know, that type of thing, that the erosion control standards are, are met, and that he knows how many trees are going to be cut and, and the requirement within the ordinance of what the replacements will be. Go ahead.
I really appreciate the thoroughness of your answer, Joyce. And again, my coming here, I was really addressing Mr. Williams, so he could publicly assure us all that he's probably already thought of this and that things look good. It was a chance to talk to him.
Well, if he hasn't, he will now.
Your, your work about citations and all that, and perhaps the code enforcement officer's work, I respect, but I wasn't at that. I was only hoping he would have a chance to let us know everything about the question.
In other words, Joyce, setback.
I beg your pardon?
I said, in other word, words, Joyce, step back.
You took, I was sitting in the audience, thinking that you were making sure that I knew that the board was going to follow all the rules, and I appreciate that. I wanted to make sure you knew. I really appreciate that. But my question was at a different place, just for him to talk about the pond and the site, and he's already said we're moving it back a bit, so that should help the, the shoreline zone. So, I thought all those were positives, and he'd be able to, you know, speak a little bit more to how well he's designed the project.
Did you have anything to add?
Oh, did I answer your question?
No, 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 I'm happy to add. So, what you were looking at, actually, the septic system was actually installed in 2020. So, it's a very new system. But as far as excavation, so we're all DEP certified with all our excavators within the shoreline zone, and we do quite a bit of work in the shoreline zone all over southern Maine. So, it's something we're very adept to, and we're fastidious about what we do to make sure that we're leaving a good footprint and be good stewards of the property.
Including trees?
Absolutely, yes, ma'am.
You can just say that on the microphone.
Yes, ma'am, including the trees.
Trees, that's it.
Any other questions on the board?
No, I, I had a question on the septic system, but you cleared that up.
Yeah, just, I pulled up, we were talking, yeah.
Any other questions? Alrighty, then the public hearing is closed. Questions from the board? The next step is to vote approval for the lakeside construction to demolish an existing home that has been damaged by the storm and replace it with a new permanent version that will be in the, it will be the same size footprint.
Same footprint, yes.
Same footprint as the existing building. There will be a shed that will be dismantled, but that will not be part of the new construction or that will not, that area will not go into the new construction. Any trees that are removed have to meet the standard of, what did you say, Craig? Two and a half inches at four feet above ground, minimum?
Right.
Minimum. And also be approved by the code enforcement officer. The erosion control standards that exist within the ordinance must be met, and once again, approval by the code enforcement officer. And there will be no permits granted until all the conditions of the ordinance and these that we have just spoken have been met. Anything else? Did I miss anything?
I only had one thing.
Sure.
The, one of those trees, after you plant them, see the tree dies.
Is it...
There's a five-year survival rate of the trees.
They have to survive for five years?
So, if they die within five years, you have to replant that tree.
Okay, and the, if nobody says anything, who's going to know it?
There's a lot of truth to that.
I think it's fair to say some of those trees need to come down.
The big ones, yeah. There's no reason why you can't plant something that's native to the area there.
Right, right.
Yeah, those trees are adding a few in the front there, where they're moving it back.
Eight trees.
What would you say, eleven feet?
Eight trees.
Yes.
So, making sure there's some grass up there or some permary service and a couple trees.
Yeah, further stabilizing lots, a lot of what we do, because with all the pine there, it's very acidic, so nothing grows, and therefore, you get a lot of washing down the shore that puts fines in the water. And so, when we go in and we rebuild, we stabilize that soil, so we eliminate that from getting worse and continuing to erode.
Mm-hmm.
And that's part of doing trees, shrubbery. There's a lot of things that can, can help with that.
Anything else to add to the conditions? If not, is there a motion to approve the lakeside construction?
Make a motion, we approve.
Sam second?
Second.
Bob seconded. Alan favor? Unanimous, okay. So, I think you get the message that you work closely with Craig and meet the standards of the ordinance, and we thank you for coming in. One thing I will say that, this is a personal opinion. I personally don't really appreciate that type of a plot plan. The ones that we usually get, they would, you know, actually show, I know you've put it in statistically, but sometimes visualizing exactly where the pond is and, and, you know, where the roads are and where the driveway is, that kind of thing is, particularly if it's...
Two inches as well.
Yeah, yeah. So, the next time you come before us, you might want to, if you do come before us again...
Oh, yeah, we do this regularly. Absolutely.
Yeah, you might want to think about that. Okay, I mean that, once again, that's my opinion.
All right.
Okay? Thank you for coming in.
Well, thank you very much.
Are you going to leave those? If you want them, I can...
Yeah, we should have, no, we should help them for the file.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
All right. So, before I forget it, am I the only one who did not go on the sidewalk? Everybody else?
Yeah.
We were all, yeah.
Yeah.
Darryl, Grace, Bob, Pete, Victoria.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Great job.
Okay, we took care of that.
Yeah, it was tight down there.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm going to back up.
The, there's a notice here for, for all of us, and there's a notice on the bulletin board about there's going to be a board of appeals hearing on October 8th for the Carl Gaines property. They have wanted to create a museum down there in their junkyard, so just public, just further announcing that anyone who wants to go to that board of appeals hearing, it will be Tuesday, October 8th at 7:00 here at the town hall. I passed out a letter from Anna Butter that applies to that. She just wanted the board's members to, to see it and have her opinion known. How about if we do the minutes? Oh, the other thing is, we got a, a notice from the floodplain management people at the state level of changes that we need to adopt, so we need to be thinking about that if we want to have it on the March town meeting. It will have to be to, into Patty, and I haven't, I haven't really looked at it yet, to be very honest with you. And I, yeah. So, so anyway, just keep that in mind, review it. Let's stick together here, guys. Keep that in mind, review it, and we'll be talking about that in the next. And also, Craig, I have a question. Did you ever find the maps?
Yes.
Okay.
They were secretly hidden.
Yeah, that's okay. Craig now has the floodplain maps.
They were secretly hidden.
Oh, they were here and nobody knew it?
Yes.
All right, let's, let's do, let's do the minutes, please, of September 9th. I just have one correction, and that's under Brookview Estates subdivision.
I've got the wrong set of minutes here. I can't do the changes. Can I have that after we're done with the changes?
Well, you can have mine, and why don't you take this?
I got August 19th here.
Yeah, yeah. Well, it's, maybe this is dated wrong. This says the night.
No, it's a meeting of September 9th.
Is this the one with the Brookview Estates subdivision, Steve told me?
Yeah.
So, I don't...
Mine is August. I just picked up the wrong one.
Oh, okay.
In my office.
Anyway, everybody have September 9th minutes?
Here, give this to Donna, because I have mine that I printed off.
I'm all set.
Oh, you are?
I gave her one.
Okay.
Why don't, why don't we take a few minutes to read them, these people? Has everybody read them? The only correction I had is in that first paragraph, this is major, so get your pen full of ink.
Major, okay.
Second line down on the Brookview Estates subdivision.
Oh, I thought you were going to start in the first sentence. Okay.
It's where it says, "South Road, which is two-tenths of a mile away, there should be no apostrophe between the 10 and the S."
You know, I wanted about that.
That's my major correction.
It's wrong. I know the teachers in the group would find it.
Any other corrections?
Yeah, but, can I write the word out?
Well, no.
Two-tenths?
Yeah, just take that.
Just take the apostrophe out.
Take the apostrophe.
Take the S out. Take the apostrophe and the S out.
Two-tenths.
So, you're only going to have two slash 10, period, that's it.
Two...
Okay.
That is correct.
Yeah.
Because it's still read two-tenths.
Yeah, yeah.
But you do not need the superfluous S.
Can I call Matthew?
Yeah.
Because I said it, two-tenths of a mile away.
Yeah, it's how we pronounce it now. All right. So, is there a motion to approve the minutes of September 9th? Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, Grace, I'm sorry.
I don't know if this is a big deal, but there's no adjourning of the meeting in our minutes.
There is, isn't there? There is not? At the end, you didn't adjourn.
Look at the very end. You don't see any of the meeting was adjourned.
Oh, my lord!
Yeah.
The meeting is still going.
It is.
Yeah.
There's another error nobody's picked up on.
Grace did, yes. She picked up on that.
No, there's another one.
Where?
Was it a test of us, Donna?
Well, let me think about this.
Well, if you've got a correction...
No, that's right. No, it's right, what I've got written there. I don't know if there was a motion to adjourn or not.
Well, there always is.
I wasn't able to do much with what I had to do the minutes.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Well, just add the adjournment if you would.
Yeah. The meeting was adjourned at 7:35 PM.
And the motion to adjourn was great.
Are you sure of that time?
I am.
Because I thought it was 7:48.
No, it was 7:35.
Because we had...
Plus or minus a minute.
Okay.
And did you make the motion to adjourn?
I think I did, actually.
Yeah, Grace made the motion to adjourn, and Victoria seconded.
Yes, that was correct.
Okay. All righty. Is there any other business to be brought up?
We still haven't made the motion to approve these minutes today.
Oh, I just...
Oh, you did?
Yeah. I thought I did.
I don't think we did.
Oh, I didn't. Sorry about that.
No, because we were finishing up on the minutes.
Right, exactly. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of September 9th as amended?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
I can't, I wasn't here.
Pete made a second.
Pete seconded? All right. All in favor of the minutes of September 9th? Okay. Now we're with it. Is there any other business?
Joyce, could I bring up that project I'm working on?
Yeah, absolutely, you should. She's done a great job in there. You absolutely should.
Okay. I... Do not have it here. It was a little bit slow during July, end of June and July, and I continued to work in the office, even though there wasn't a lot of business to take care of, but I was busy. Last year, at the end of 2023, I did an index of everything that happened at every meeting throughout the year. And then I sent it to all of you. And I know Daryl, and I thank you for this, Daryl. You made my day. Daryl sent me an email as soon as he read it and said something like, "Donna, this is wonderful. Thank you for doing that for us." And then when I came into the meeting, there was a couple of members that came up and said, "Oh, Donna, that's really good." So I want to make the announcement that I have now got five years of the index done, and Beverly has ordered me little tags. I've got all the years on the index, and for me, I've already used it like seven times last Wednesday. I got a call last Friday from Ray Marshall. You people know him as Tiedemann Property. He called me on the phone, and he was driving a truck somewhere, and told me what he wanted to do, and he says, "I don't know what year it was. I want to have copies of everything I've submitted to you." I just pulled my index out, and I went, "Oh," boom, 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 and ran to the file, and I have them in my hand. It's extremely... And the reason I'm doing it is because my job, I've been in for 12 years, I've got a lot of notebooks in my office now. But now I can go to one book, and it tells me everything. It tells whether we did a notice of decision, what date. I've included and I didn't... I went and opened the minutes up, and as I typed my index, I used everything that happened at a meeting. For instance, one meeting, there was a couple that came in, and Joyce said, "Oh, you can just come in." It was something about they were swapping land to make something right down in Coventry North. Everybody that has come in this office for the last five years, I have on that index. And I think it's going to be a wonderful... I'm using it every day. I know that Craig will use it. I'm going to give a copy to Craig. And if anybody on the planning board thinks I might want one, I just got to make copies. I don't know, Daryl, are you looking up old stuff?
Not currently.
Not currently? And it will go back 12 years, as long as I've been here.
It's a great resource.
And it really is a great tool for all of us. Craig comes in all the time, "Donna, do you remember what year blah, blah, blah I was here?" And it was getting to the point I couldn't retrieve the information fast enough, so that's when I thought of this index.
We thank you a million times.
Well, and it never will have to be updated, because I've got everything on it.
When she says she's thorough, she's thorough.
I'm thorough on it.
She is, for sure.
Thank you.
Much needed, and many, many, many thanks.
Good job. Thank you.
Upcoming possible future applications to the board is Ray Marshall. Have you talked to him?
Say that again?
Ray Marshall for tents down at Tiedemann Farm?
I have heard something about it, but I haven't come across it.
I have the files, if you want to see everything.
Yeah, but he hasn't as yet come in with an application, but he's obviously... Because he called her for information, he's either thinking about it or maybe going to do it.
I bet I've talked to him 100 times in the past few weeks.
Well, after Joyce came in to see me this afternoon...
Right.
After you left, he called again, driving his truck, and he hadn't received my email. I scanned everything and sent it to my email and forwarded it to him. I didn't have the end of the email right. He told me it was .com, and it was supposed to be .net. So I just went in and forwarded it to the new address, and he got it while he was there in his vehicle.
Yeah.
And he tells me, within a week, by the end of a week, we're going to have his application, he's going to have the site plan.
Whatever, everything he needs.
He evidently, he's got a big, you know, decision, and he's made it.
So anyway, that's...
For the camping area?
Yeah.
But it's not like he's ever put in...
He's going to have to fill out a new application, pay the application fees, and come in with a new plan, because it is quite different from what she explained to me than what he did before.
He never actually had an application the last times he come in. He was just here speaking.
Right, but he had a plan. He had a plan.
He had a plan, but he didn't have an application at all.
It was all...
Well, we did charge him, though.
Now he's changed. Where he spent money on that piece of property beside him, now he's trying to just get some tent sites in. Start with that, and then continue on.
You know what? You don't have a microphone.
He sold something.
He's bought something.
Bought the chick farm.
Yeah. He went to Sandy Beach.
Yeah, well, that's what he had before.
Well, now he wants to...
Oh, he bought down to the river?
Right.
I thought he already owned it.
No.
Well, he owns down to the river on his piece, but his piece doesn't have a beach on it.
Oh, so he's bought an additional piece of...
On the other side of the river?
No.
No.
Same side.
The property directly beside him, close to the river.
The old chick place.
Is that the one that came before the...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Conservation of the...
Sidewalk or the appeals board?